Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee meeting for August 28th, 2019. My name is Chris Dodson and with us today is Alex Nagy, our sign language interpreter. City Council will discuss the following legislation for preliminary vote. Pre-agenda appointments and reappointments. Bill number 2019-1923, resolution appointing Samantha Bushman to serve as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire March 31st, 2021. Bill number 2019-1924, resolution appointing Knowledge Build Hudson to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30th, 2021. 2019-1927, resolution appointing Megan Winters to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for the term to expire April 30th, 2020. Public Works Committee, Ms. Kell Smith is the chair. Deferred Paper, Bill number 2019-1637, a resolution authorizing the mayor and directors of the Department of Parks and Department of Public Works to enter to a lease agreement with the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater for a portion of real property located on Liberty Avenue between 29th and 30th Streets. Internal and Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the chair. Deferred Papers, Bill number 2018-983, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to execute a quitclaim deed or deeds and any other necessary or appropriate documents, agreements, and instruments conveying as is all of the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and designated city-owned properties through the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for consideration of $1 each contingent upon the mayor and director of the Department of Finance first entering into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA, setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveyances and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and URA relating to the subsequent disposition of these properties to third Now this concludes the reading for August 28th, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this pre-agenda item for Pittsburgh City Council today, which is Wednesday, August 28th, 2019. We are interviewing for an assortment of appointments to boards, authorities, and commissions. And so, Madam Clerk, may I begin with you and have the purpose of Bills 1923, 24, and 27?
Bill 1923, resolution appointing Samantha Bushman to serve as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire March 31st, 2021. Bill number 1924, resolution appointing Knowledge Build Hudson to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30th, 2021. Bill number 1927, resolution appointing Megan Winters to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30th, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm Councilman Kraus. I'll be chairing this morning's pre-agenda item. We should be joined shortly by other members. But if I may, Samantha, can I begin with you? Just tell us a little bit about yourself and your desire to serve on the Ethics Hearing Board.
Sure, I'd be delighted to.
Thanks.
My name's Samantha Bushman. I am kind of like a Pittsburgh native, I feel like, at this point. I originally grew up on Long Island. I came here to go to Carnegie Mellon undergrad. I wound up staying and got a master's degree here and then started both of my businesses here. So currently, I run a nonprofit that I founded back in 2009. It's called Talk. It serves youth to empower them to make healthy decisions. And anything in particular else you would like to hear about?
No.
Cool. All right. That's a little bit about me. Hey, thanks.
Okay. So Knowledge. What a great name.
Thank you.
I'm so jealous. Give me, so give me a little bit of, would you give us a little bit of background on and where the name Knowledge comes from? I just love it.
Sure. Well, good morning. First off, so I'm originally from Jackson, Michigan, and I grew up here in Pittsburgh and the West Coast. And I've done a lot of work in schools and nonprofits, and then I pivoted to do community development work. I worked on alarm revision plan with the Alarm and Consensus Group doing some volunteer work. And then the opportunity for the Housing Authority came around. So I think consistently through my life, it's been about paying forward. So it's like getting information and then sharing. So my name is befitting of me as far as getting knowledge and then building and helping other people build and grow. It's a name that came from my culture and my family. A lot of it was really affirmed by my grandmother. You know, she saw the qualities and really advocated for the name. So that's how I got my name. And a little bit of background as far as it relates to my work with the Housing Authority, doing government relations work and being a connector.
Nice. Can I ask about your middle name Build? There's just such positive, I mean, what a great way to go through life with this sort of incredibly positive anointing to like your purpose on the planet. I just love it.
No, thank you. No, so actually Knowledge Build is my first name. So I have two first names, like Bobby Joe, but it's just not like hyphenated. Yeah. So Knowledge Build is my first name. Often, people just call me Knowledge, which is fine. And yeah, so it's just like, it's like a two thing. It's almost like getting information and then building with it, right? So it's just not like, you know, you're the one with all the knowledge or you're seeking all the knowledge. It's like, what are you going to do with it once you attain it? Or, you know, so it's really like a purpose, like you said, to like live life by, at least for me, that's what.
That's great. Yeah. Pleasure meeting both of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Megan. Good morning. Welcome. So will you tell us a little bit about yourself and your desire to serve in the Housing Opportunity Fund?
Here to go to Duquesne, oh, sorry. I moved here to go to Duquesne in 2010, and I haven't left. My husband and I bought a house in the West End in 2016. And so I'm kind of looking forward to being a voice on the Housing Opportunity Fund from a part of the city that not a lot of folks know about or, you know, even drive-through. And we bought our house at a really affordable price, and I am kind of looking forward to making sure that everyone knows about the parts of the city in the West End that, you know, have affordable housing and could really be a good place for a lot of folks.
Yeah. If there's any one topic that has been before us longer and more so than any other in the 12 years I've been here now, it's the topic of affordable housing, you know? Everybody has the right to be housed in, you know, in a clean and safe and well-maintained property. And it's, you know, the sort of the whole American dream, you know, to be a homeowner and, you know, have property and put down roots and all those kinds of things. And this council is clearly committed to the work that needs to be done and has been. And there's more to do. God knows there's plenty more to do, but I can't think of anything that is more important in the work that we're doing now and that we match housing stock, match our housing stock to income levels. But I like, the best definition I've heard to date about what affordable housing means is to understand first and foremost your population, right? Who makes up your city? What are the income levels and the income brackets of the people that make up the population of your city? And then how do we match housing stock to be available to meet that, your income and the percentage you should be spending to have a safe, affordable house? And how can we make certain that as we develop, we are creating units that are meeting those income levels so that everybody has an opportunity to be housed? So I'm not sure if other members are going to come out and join us. And Councilman O'Connor wanted to come up, but I know he's out at a press conference out here. Is there anything else we should have asked you or anything else that you might want to offer before we close the interviews? No? We're good? Thanks for coming in this morning. I appreciate that you made the effort. And the appointments will come up for a vote this coming Tuesday, which would be September 2nd-ish? Yeah, September 2nd. I can't believe I knew that. And I'm certain that you'll go through on unanimous vote. So thanks. Thanks for being here. We're adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee meeting of Wednesday, August 28th, 2019. We've had our pre-agenda, our first order of business, public comment. Members of the public who want to address City Council, please come forward. You'll be given three minutes. The green light means the beginning of your three minutes. Yellow light means you have one minute to summarize. Red light means your time has expired. Please relinquish the podium. I'd like to remind everyone, the rules of council state that public comments limit to matters of concern and public action, which are or may be for council. Profanity will not be permitted. An order will be maintained at all times. First speaker, please.
Happy birthday, Councilwoman Kell Smith.
If we're going to do that, let's do it all. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Teresa Kell Smith. Happy birthday to you. I'm going to put my address down here. I don't want nobody to think I don't want them to know where I live. Or in my household. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. All right. First speaker.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you.
First speaker, please.
I just have a question. Someone has already signed up. Oh, never mind. I'm sorry. It's Mr. Adams. He must have been here earlier. Okay, my name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. Now, the way, a lot of times, the way the councilman that's hosting the meeting speaks, he tells us that we can only speak about whatever is on the table. But citizens, that's incorrect. Now, I'm going to speak about something that's not on the table. I'm going to speak about the police review and them not passing it. Now, you know, I come down about my son, that I say this, that anytime you have one person that can be the judge, jury, and executioner, I mean that he can kill someone and he don't have to answer any questions. That's what I'm saying the police review should be. When there's something like that, he has to answer to somebody. My son is dead. Five cops walked out while he was saying I have one lung. I couldn't even get an inquest. Why I'm saying this, and to the mothers that our sons have been killed and our children have been killed, I'm saying this, right don't wrong nobody. There's no way we should have had a police review where the police would have come and had to face interviewing but couldn't answer to what we were saying. I mean, what we were accused, I'm serious. I mean that. We didn't need that police review with that clause in there. But we do need a police review. Please think about what I'm saying. You have one person that he can make the decision to kill someone, but he don't have to answer? He can't tell, or he'll tell the blue, tell the cops and tell everybody, but the family, we can't find out what happened? All we want to know is what happened. And if something was wrong, then somebody should answer. That's all I'm saying when I come down here. And the way he did Randall Taylor, do he understand that the community is outraged? Randall Taylor has served this community, our children, and he put them out? Do you understand what he's doing? Do you understand he's acting like Hitler, Gestapo? Do you understand what the Gestapo do? He looked at the cop. One time I said yes. He looked at the cop and he comes back to, because I'm not allowed to say yes, but I have seen some of them. Then firemen came down here. They were disgusting. They hollered. They didn't put none of them out. If I say yes in the background, I told the policeman, I'm going to have to sue you so you can understand that he's wrong. Do you understand he's the businessman? Do you understand he don't believe that he is below the law? He feels like he's above the law. Do you understand? And I've been telling you, point of order. I went over there last week and I told you, when he's doing wrong, yes can say point of order because they sure do. Learn how to be council members for everybody, not just some.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Council. I was in the neighborhood, thought I'd stop by. One thing you'll never be able to accuse me of is not being transparent with you. So I wanted to share information with you. I gave you cards about the Pittsburgh Citizen Corps Council. I believe we shared with you our capability report as a corporation. And today, I'm here to share with you, we have finished our research and our work over six years of citizen evidence-based research for emergency planning and disaster training. We have launched the nation's first city-level citizen corps. We have over 47, almost 50 veterans who have signed up to perform the leadership. What our corporation has done in responding to the FEMA and DHS 2013 national vulnerability is we have designed in a system that is steered, run, operated, and sustained by citizens. It's a multi-tiered system that works from state to the lowest level of citizen vulnerability, which is a neighborhood level. This has never been done in a nation. There's no precedent for it. And we designed it here in southwestern Pennsylvania based off the citizen vulnerabilities. We've been sharing that with you since 2013. The question today is, for a city and its citizens who are so vulnerable and have opened up to this new and innovative emergency planning development as we're prepared to market it to the world now and the nation, why out of nine council members, not one of you are interested in doing for your constituents what you cannot do yourself? And so let me share with you, and write this down, because you'll be hearing a lot of this, conscientious intentional ignorance, ICI. It's an ignorance when you know that what you're hearing is right for you, is right for your roles, duties, and your responsibilities. Yet you hear the messenger and I don't fit your criteria. And what we have in research is a clear demonstration that this body in front of me has no respect for black innovation or technology or development. I believe if I stood here and I looked like this, I would have met with at least half of you by now. And that's not a good statement to make. And as we go national now, we have to say that to all the other cities, this is what you don't want to be like politically. And Corey, our veterans jumped on because of you and your disrespect to the contribution and our veterans that gave us this gift that we finished 11 years prior to the federal deadline of 2030. And also to United Nations Sustainable Development Goals for Emergency Planning, we meet and exceed all federal, state, and current local emergency planning. We've shifted Pittsburgh's emergency planning operations without any credit. And we've helped Allegheny County to make their website a lot better as well without any credit, just bringing the information to where it needs to be. But I want you all to ask yourselves, what's stopping you from doing what you can't do for your constituent yourself? Is it the messenger? Is it really the messenger?
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. See no other speakers. We go to the roll call. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cockhill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
President Kraus.
Here.
Mr. LaGue.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Reverend Burgess. Eight members present.
Thank you very much. We'll start with the Finance and Law Committee, which I am the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1843, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Dicky McCamey and Killcoat in an amount not to exceed $4,180.80 for professional legal services in connection with police matters.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Producers nay. Invoices on the table. Need a motion for the invoices?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions on invoices? No conversation on invoices? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Producers nay. I know there are intergovernmental transfers and P-cards, both on, until I have to get to the page.
11.
Interdepartmental transfers? Need a motion?
A motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Producers nay. P-cards on the table. Need a motion for the P-cards?
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation with the P-card? Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I'll be abstaining because this is a book to look through today.
All those in favor of the P-cards, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Producers nay. Abstentions?
Nay.
One abstentions. That takes us to page 13, Public Works Committee. Ms. Kell Smith, the birthday girl, is the chair. We have a supplemental paper.
Bill 1966, resolution providing for an agreement between the city and Crafton Bureau in connection with the paving of Ingram Avenue between Dunking and Stuben Street, providing for the payment of the cost thereof by the Bureau to the city. The costs associated with the pavement of the Bureau's portion of Ingram Avenue, estimated cost of preparation and completion of the work, is $32,249.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith?
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Producers nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1978, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the city and the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for services rendered by Clean Team ambassadors within the South Side PED at an annual cost not to exceed
Be the next one, too. I think we can read them both together.
Yes.
Bill 1979, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership in an amount of $11,662.88 for invoice services rendered within the South Side PED charge to and payable from the PED Trust Fund.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second. Very brief discussion.
Discussion. President Kraus.
Thank you. This just allows us to enter into our agreement for annual expenditures for the Clean Team Services paid through the Parking Enhancement District Funds.
Any other conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Producers nay. Takes us to a deferred paper.
Bill 1637, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and the Department of Public Works to enter into a lease agreement with the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater for a portion of real property located on Liberty Avenue between 29th and 30th Streets.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Conversation?
Oh, sorry. I didn't get a chance to talk to Councilwoman Smith about this since we've been on recess, but this is the one that's been in motion now. So the ballet just came and presented to strip district neighbors, and so they're working out something, but it's not ready to approve today.
Hold it for...
Three weeks would be great.
Three weeks? Motion to hold for three weeks?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Producers nay. Even though we're going to go to this committee, I, by happenstance, actually, I had a conversation with the executive director of the ballet on Sunday at a community festival. I didn't know. He lives in my district. And so I am always a fan of dancers. I can't dance at all. I have lots of...
Oh, you can dance, Councilman.
Actually, I can, but that's not, I can dance not like that. And I had lots of dancers in class, and they are great, great artists and...
It's a fantastic institution and a wonderful asset to have in the city as well.
Great, great, great. And my wife and daughter love dance. So Urban Recreation Committee, Mr. Cockhill is the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1908, resolution naming the Ferrywood Playground at Ferrywood Park as the Eric Guy Kelly Playground.
Need a, well, need a motion for someone?
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation?
Just briefly, we had the hearing yesterday, and we only had one person speaking in favor, and everyone else I've heard from spoke in favor. This is the playground in Ferrywood where Officer Guy Kelly was raised, and his mother also worked for the city for 37 years. And so we're happy to be able to, with the support of his family and his widow and his sister, we're happy to be able to name this after him.
Any other conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Producers nay. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management Committee. Ms. Strasburger is the chair.
Bill 1971, resolution amending Resolution Number 801, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with AMCOM for the lease of the multifunction devices and the managed print services for a sum not to exceed $375,000 per year for five years by increasing the not-to-exceed amount to $2,310,000.
Need a motion, Ms. Strasburger.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Need a second? So your hands.
Would you like to come up to the table? All three. Good morning. Thank you for joining us today. If you could just introduce yourselves.
My name is Heidi Norman, Deputy Director of Innovation and Performance.
My name is Jeff Hovis, Business Relationship Manager, Innovation and Performance.
I'm Gwendolyn Moore, Acting Assistant Director, Innovation and Performance.
Thank you. So, you know, the three of you and I met on this, earlier this week, so that you could brief me on this increase. And so if you could just explain the exact same thing that we discussed to the rest of council, that'd be helpful.
I'd be happy to. Thank you. So in late June, we learned in Innovation and Performance from the Office of Management and Budget that we had reached the limit of our $375,000 budget for printing and printing services, maintenance and leasing of the printers in the city. We met with OMB in early July and learned that we could no longer pay any of the invoices for the same items that I just listed. So today, we're asking for an increase for 2019 only to do two things. One is we need to continue to pay our printing invoices for the city. We are currently nearly $70,000 in arrears on invoices for printing that has been completed in the city, and we need money to be able to lease those devices and to continue our printing services through the year. The second item is that it gives IMP, excuse me, time to research the root causes of this overage so that we can submit a report to council on how we will be proceeding starting in 2020. The issue is, when we sat down with OMB, we learned that we actually had run out of money on the same budget last year at the end of the third quarter. We held the invoices for the fourth quarter and paid them with 2019 funds. That now backs us up. So we were in arrears for one quarter last year and we're in arrears for two quarters this year where we don't have any money to pay. What we have done since meeting with OMB at the beginning of July about this, if we have assigned one of our most experienced managers to lead this project and to look into the history of why we are hitting these budget limits. Originally, this contract and the legislation was approved back in 2016 for a three-year contract with AMCOM that was supposed to end in 2019 this year. In 2017, it was amended to extend the contract for five years. So currently, this contract runs through 2021. But in speaking with Councilwoman Strasburger yesterday, what we think is the best thing to do for the city is instead of amending the entire contract and legislation moving forward to 2021, that we would only amend for this year, look to see what's actually happening and why we're in this situation, and then make a plan for moving forward.
And so, you know, other items that we discussed is that you come back to us with a report. Part of the sort of forensic audit that you're doing, style audit that you're doing, is one, you're assigning a project manager to this item, which didn't occur in the past. So that's one way you're rectifying it. And two, you'll come back to us with a department-by-department report of the amount of kind of printing that is occurring and if it's changed dramatically year to year so that each department is aware of that and we're transparent in that way. And also determining to what extent AMCOM might have fallen down on their responsibilities so we might be able to recoup some money in some potential future contract. And so I do, you know, that's why I think we discussed coming back to us with a report to determine what the actual projection should be in right sizing the budget for this in future years. And I appreciate that you're, you know, you're training your focus on this now and we're correcting this after the fact, but we are correcting this as a city.
Yes. So what we had discussed is in the report, there were a number of things that we would Yes, so what we had discussed is, in the report, there were a number of things that we would like to see. One is a department-by-department printing usage year over year. Now, to be fair, none of the departments have received a report like this. So, none of the departments would know whether or not they've increased or decreased the amount that they're printing year over year. I think that that's something that's really important and it's something that should probably be continued into the future so that departments are aware of how much printing they're using. The second thing is, we want to review AMCOM's optimization plan. So the vendor was required in the contract, department-by-department and location-by-location, to give us optimization plans to help us understand where we can take small desktop printers and replace them with what are called multi-function devices. These are large devices that offer printing, copying, faxing, scanning, right? So they're multi-function, that's why they're called that. And we aren't sure that the optimization plans we received actually helped us to save money or not. So that's something else we want to look into. We want to do projections of realistic costs for printing. We're not certain, but in our initial findings, we think that the initial assessment only took into account the costs of two items. One is the amount of toner that the city uses each year and the other is the amount that it costs for printing and binding in the print shop. We don't think the costs of leasing or maintaining any of the printers from AMCOM were included in the original budget projections. But that's something that we want to confirm and look at. And then finally, if we need to, we'd like to talk about renegotiating terms with AMCOM and looking at the contract and understanding what exactly are they providing to us? Because our original understanding from them was that they were going to help us save money and clearly, that is not what's actually happening.
So, it's important to, what I heard from you is that it's important to approve this and there's a sort of an urgency here because at any time, AMCOM could just, if they chose, if they so chose, they could shut down our multi-function devices and prevent us from actually successfully, you know, printing as we might need to across the city. So, we have, we owe them money, we need to pay them what we owe and then, again, figure out what is the best budget for this item, this fine item in the future, which is what you'll be presenting to us perhaps at the end of the year, beginning of next year.
Right, that is correct.
Those are all my questions.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you very much. So, trying to follow along and trying to compare notes and to understand what I just heard, so... Everyone here is IMP.
Correct.
But I thought I just heard you say, I'm sorry, I missed your name and I should know your name.
Heidi Norman.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Norman. That you were going to look across departments to see what other departments are spending on printing.
Yes, ma'am, the...
But that seems like an OMB function and why council has given OMB very large contracts for accounting software multiple years in a row now, so that we would be able to compare functional categories across departments. I hope I used my accounting language correctly, but, you know, how much does DPW spend on pencils versus city council spending on pencils versus IMP spending on pencils? So, I don't think it's your function to look and compare. Is it because it's a technology contract? Are we kind of intersecting what our roles are here?
We receive the invoices and we sign off on the invoices because the money's in our budget. And we request that now that the invoices be presented by department so that each of the multi-function devices, printers and copiers have serial numbers and identifiers, that we now understand which ones are in which department so that we can actually have the invoice sorted by department usage.
I'm a little more confused, so you were both signing the contracts and receiving all printing invoices for all city departments?
It's one.
And signing off on all, or it's all lumped into one thing?
One invoice.
But you didn't realize that you were out of budget, but OMB has told you on the invoices that you manage, that you can't spend any more money on printing?
We, according to the amount of money in the contract, we've exceeded that now. So there's no more money in the contract for us to pay them.
And you're the manager of the contract or OMB is the manager of the contract?
We manage the contract. Originally, OMB negotiated the contract with the vendor, but since the money was put into our budget, we manage the contract.
So you've told yourself you can't spend more money on printing?
We've, we have reached the not to exceed amount for the year.
Okay, so there is a not to exceed amount?
Correct, of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. No, for the entire city.
So that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the whole city? So when, when you kept saying we, I thought you were just referring to your department and I was...
No, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Like, why is IMP spending three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on printing? Was going to be my next question, so that is not what you're saying.
Correct.
That, it is citywide. We pay the invoices to AMCOM for the entire city, all departments.
So, OMB alerted you that the entire city, like including us in our individual offices?
That's correct.
Can't actually like print one more piece of paper?
No, they, what they notified us is that we had reached the not to exceed limit on the contract and that we could no longer pay invoices for the printing.
Okay, so AMCO could come and take our printers away or DPW's printers away or anybody's printers away?
Technically, technically, hypothetically, they could.
Okay, just, okay, so that is a very different picture than I was trying to figure out from what you were saying.
Sorry that it was not clear.
Alrighty, so... Then, what we, I think none of us understood at this table, and I ask this because I'm assuming people at home are not understanding this either. So, in the budget that council approved in twenty-eighteen, we ran out of money as well?
Yes, we did.
And didn't realize it, I don't think we realized it. And that we didn't realize that OMB had then taken money from the twenty-nineteen budget in order to pay for the twenty-eighteen expenditures. And that is, so we've now run out even earlier in twenty-nineteen than we ran out. So it's basically been underbudgeted two consecutive years.
That is correct.
Okay, I don't, I don't know what else to ask right now, so, but I thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you serious?
So this started in two thousand eighteen?
The contract?
Well, it sounded like you were having problems last year and then you just shifted the money to two thousand nineteen's budget.
Yes, so the budgetary problems with council, with the contract started happening in two thousand eighteen.
So nobody said anything in budget time to council about this?
Not that I am aware of.
Didn't know until December that we were actually over the budget. What happened was, we are, but we are invoiced the month after. So in November, we got October's, we paid partial part of October's. In December, we got November's and that's when we realized that we had no more money.
Okay, and this is for a company to do the printing and binding?
This is for all of our copiers, printer, for leasing of all of the equipment and for all of the printing as well.
Okay.
Right.
What about the print shop?
They're included.
That's included as well.
Okay, because we're still waiting to see them get the equipment that they need to do the job
Correct.
that a lot of us aren't even using in-house. And I'm sure in other departments, they're taking it outside to get it copied and bind if they need to. And I know when this administration came in, they wanted to start sending it over to the county, which would have cost us an arm and a leg, county would have liked that. County should do it for free, we're part of the county. I have to keep reminding the county that we're part of the county. But I, I just can't understand if, even if you found out in December, why council didn't know until August.
That you didn't know that last year, we had run out of funds as well? I don't have an answer for you that would be satisfactory.
Okay, and...
Just to answer your question, the amount that we're including does include the upgrade of the items in the print shop for two thousand nineteen. The amount that we're requesting in the increase does include an upgrade for the, does include the lease payments for the upgraded equipment in the print shop.
Just in a print shop?
It includes the lease.
Or is it finally getting them the machinery that they need to do the work, which would cost us less than half of what it costs us outside?
The new equipment is included in that, the money, the money that we're requesting includes the leasing for all of the existing equipment that we have, our anticipated cost for printing and the lease for new equipment in the print shop. It includes all three.
Okay, and you couldn't do any type of intergovernmental transfers at all from any other parts of money that you have to, instead of...
I'm not sure OMB is getting the money, but I do believe that they're getting it from another one of our accounts. I don't know, we have to ask OMB that. So the money, in other words, we have...
So, so your department doesn't unders, doesn't do that piece of it? You just have OMB do all that?
We have an analyst in OMB who follows all of our money and they're the ones we're working with now. We went to them and said, there's an overrun. We would like to request additional funds to pay for the rest of two thousand nineteen. They found sources for that money and that's how we're putting the money into this contract.
Out of IMP?
Out of IMP.
Okay, but why didn't they know about this last year?
Why didn't they know about the overrun last year?
In December when you know about it.
So, OMB did know last year in, in December that we couldn't pay the, the invoices. And we held the invoice.
And they haven't said anything so that you would have the money. I guess they just decided that you were going to do some type of intergovernmental transfer. Is there other money in your budget that you haven't used?
Well...
Who, I mean, who would know that in your...
Right, that, that would be our budget analyst in OMB. So we're, we're working very closely with them to help find the funds from within our budget to pay for the remainder of the year.
But if that's their job, you've got to find where. I mean, it's either the department that's doing the work or OMB. If OMB is doing this for everyone else in the city...
Oh, they're being, they're being incredibly helpful in, in helping us do this.
That's great, but they haven't been incredibly helpful to this council to know that there was a problem here since last December.
Well, they've been with an acting director, now they have a, they're, I think the mayor's submitted a name for a new director, so maybe that's part of it, just saying.
They have an deputy director or a director and that's no excuse. That's the administration's job to make sure there's somebody that's capable there to do the work. But we have a budget director that is sitting right over here and no one told our budget director. I'm not blaming you three at all, understand that. I don't want to hear the excuses that, oh, well, we had to make up for it last year so we just left it go and, OMB, we have an analyst, but the analyst wasn't keeping on it.
To be fair, the project was called the Printer Optimization Project and we thought that as we implemented the project each year, that we would optimize and reduce costs. So even though we had an overrun last year, we assumed that if we did all the analysis and actually implemented the, the recommendations, that we would save money. However, that wasn't the case. So for instance, we would take out five copiers, which had no lease on them, and put in a multi-function device, which had maybe a four hundred dollar per month lease. So really, there's no savings there, but we assumed that that would be the case. The other thing is, the optimization was done based on the footprint of the printers, not on how people worked. So for instance, in finance, you can put a multi-function device in the middle of the floor in real estate, but those folks really need a printer on their desks. That was not taken into consideration when doing the optimization. We said, oh, we can get rid of ten copiers, put a multi-function device here, but then meanwhile, the cashier, each time they want to print something, they have to go over and leave the constituent at the, at the window and go pick them up. That was not a good way to work. So now we have, as part of our analysis going forward...
Are you talking about the person in the print shop?
No, I'm talking about just overall printing.
Okay.
So for instance, in the, in that area, we assumed that we could just, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I do it too.
We assumed that we could just reduce the number of items without considering how the person worked. And now we have to bring into part of the mix, how do they work? Is it better for them to have a printer or a copier right next to them in the cashier? Or is it better to have a centralized multi-function device? It's really not, but the multi-function device is still there, but in the meantime, we had to add a copier or a printer for each of those folks as well. That's just an example of the optimization we thought would occur, which did not.
And I don't believe it's your job to oversee every department in the city of Pittsburgh for the, I think the print shop's under you, right?
Correct.
And nobody has given you extra money to, to bring the print shop up to where it should be? Right?
Yeah, these, yes, these budgets were assigned back in twenty-sixteen.
So maybe next, in this year's budget, we'll see what they really need over in the print shop also.
That'll be part of our analysis, yes, so we'll give you a report back in December or early January, yes.
And maybe the budget department will start having their analysts do a better job. So I have to say, I'm not blaming you. I mean, if that's where it's supposed to happen, but the money should have been put in for the print shop. I understand that we all need the printers everywhere else, but it's not just your department. You actually found a problem that has to do with the entire city of Pittsburgh.
Yes, ma'am, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out, is there a way that we can correct this? There's, my understanding is the original intent of the printer optimization was twofold. One is to save on toner because that's an environmental issue and it would, helps the city become greener. But the other thing we were trying to do ultimately is to save the city money. I'm disappointed to say that at this time, that is not what is happening and we're trying to figure out why and what can we do about it in order to get this back on track.
Well, don't care about the greener because you trying to keep it green. They're out putting plastic all over the streets now that causes cancer for the people riding the trucks. So, there's nothing green about the city right now. But thank you for coming to us with this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coghill.
I'll, I'll be quick, thanks for being here, folks. I guess my first question is, maybe I missed this, but how much did we underbudget in two thousand and eighteen as opposed to this year? Do you have a figure on that?
Do you remember what the overage was for twenty-eighteen? I'm sorry, I don't have that number at hand.
Okay, we talking like, so, we talking over a hundred thousand dollars? I mean, you knew that much?
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
The average is about forty thousand dollars per month for this year.
Got it, right.
So at the most, it would have been eighty thousand.
So we didn't learn our lesson in two thousand and eighteen and we underbudgeted the same?
That is correct.
But, but, we don't know if we saved money in the, we, we didn't save any money. And, and through my experience, I, I hear that argument all the time, I got to tell you. This technology is going to save us money, whether it's less physical man hours or woman hours or, you know, so, never quite pans out that way, I feel. It really ends up costing you more money, I think, in the end. But when we're talking about printing, we're talking about really leasing the equipment, is that right? We're not talking about a piece of paper. Yeah.
We're talking about...
We pay the lease on the equipment itself and then we pay, let's say, point two cents per page for print, for copy, for color, for two sides. There's different pricing structures for the type of printing or copying.
So every piece of paper is tracked?
That is correct.
By the printer company, we don't necessarily have that.
That is correct.
Right.
Which is why we actually, in, in IMP, because we receive the invoices, we actually can find out from the printer company...
Like, Councilman Coghill might have actually spent like three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars on his office printer and everybody else printed, didn't print at all.
I sincerely doubt that.
Right, but hypothetically, right?
Hypothetically, we could actually tell that because they track how many copies or how many prints are done on every single device.
Got it.
They can do that.
But when, the majority of the bill for us to pay, is it AMCO?
AMCOM.
AMCOM. Is that in the leasing of the equipment or is that in the paper? Or is it, would, does it, do you have a percentage wise there, is it...
I can get, I can get you the exact figures, but the leasing and maintenance on the... I can get, I can get you the exact figures, but the leasing and maintenance on the devices is the majority of the cost.
Okay, that's all I need. I, I don't need the, I don't need the copies or anything like that.
Two cents, you said. Two cents.
I'm, I'm just saying that's a figure, that, that's not the exact figure.
I think it ranges from .02 to .09.
Do they supply the paper?
Black or white versus color.
I'm sorry?
Does, does-
AMCOM?
AMCOM supply the paper?
No, they do not.
So we supply the paper?
Correct. Each department is responsible for purchasing their paper.
But there's an actual two cent charge for that printer to print onto that paper.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
First round. Anybody else, first round. Second round. Ms. Gross.
Just a slight addition then, as a follow-up. So if we're worried about our footprint, as environmental footprint is, I think we should, and I think it's interesting to us. And I see, for example, I'm still devoted to my paper that's in front of me right now, and other council members are using their electronic devices. We should also, if we're going to kind of peel this back, and it shouldn't be too hard, we could be, we could know how much each city department is doing for paper purchasing as well, right?
That is correct. And, and I think it would actually be very good information for the leaders for each department, because they currently, they have no way of knowing how much they're printing.
Again, maybe I'm the problem in my department. You know, we don't know, really, how much, how do I compare, and how can I do better?
Is it increasing, is it decreasing?
Right?
Exactly.
If we each know what we're doing, either in our individual offices or as departments, then we can set goals for doing better, and, and not just see the cost savings, but the environmental savings. So, okay, I, I think I'm getting the whole picture. Thank you.
I still use a dry erase board, so I'm not the problem.
I think you're okay there.
Make it your chalkboard.
Erica.
So just to summarize, I think that out of this, the silver lining is, we have an opportunity to learn more information, to have a project manager on this, and then for, for when you know what the appropriate budget amount should be for 2020, you can come back to us with a report, so we're all up to speed, and we all understand, department by department, not only, for instance, the toner and the usage, perhaps also, if you have that information, you can provide for us, the paper purchasing. Make it more transparent, and then also figure out where AMCOM went wrong, and we need to rectify that relationship as well, and perhaps that could be reflected in a reduction in a future payment to them in a contract. So we'll look forward to that report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Another conversation. The conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Tensions. All right, thank you very much. That takes us to the last meeting of the day, which is Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Mr. Connors is the chair. You have to throw a paper.
Bill 983. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to execute a quitclaim deed and any other necessary or appropriate documents, agreements, and instruments conveying as is all of the city's right title and interest of any and designated city-owned properties to the URA for consideration of $1 each contingent upon the mayor and director of finance first entering into a corporation agreement with the URA setting forth the rights and obligations of the city, and the URA relating to these initial conveniences, and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the city, and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of these properties to third parties.
Mr. Connors, motion.
Motion to hold three weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. This brings us to the resolution. motions and resolutions, part of the meeting. Is there anything for members? Ms. Harris?
Yes, I, I would like to hold a post agenda on the new way that the city is drawing lines, and the materials that they're using in the city of Pittsburgh.
So line paintings.
Line painting.
There is a second.
Second.
All right. Cablecast?
Cablecast, post agenda.
Cablecast, post agenda on drawing lines.
Yeah, the line-
Line painting?
Lines, as in, as in the highway.
Striping, striping. Yeah.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks, all the lines. Got it. All right. It's been party movement, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Announcements, as a reminder, please note that the council and clerk's office will be closed on Monday, September 2nd in observance of Labor Day. Council meetings will resume with the regular meeting of council Tuesday, September 4th. Standing committee meeting Wednesday, September 5th. I need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
I have one other, one other-
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
No, 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 I didn't raise my hand before. I'd like to make a motion to hold a post agenda hearing, cablecast post agenda for the city's climate action plan.
You're the second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay.
And while we're at it, can we just give the date for the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy post agenda? Is that the 11th?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry. Yeah, the 11th at 1:30. So September 11th at 1:30.
Is that 1:30?
Yeah.
Harris?
Yes, since our president isn't here, and you're in charge right now, I asked if we could do interviews, and I have not been able to be at the interviews, when they make them on a Wednesday morning. And since I called for them, I'd really like to see them move to a Tuesday or something. I actually go to court almost every Wednesday morning, and can't make it here by 9:30. It's impossible whenever I'm hearing at 9 o'clock. So if you would relay that message between you and the clerk-
The clerk is, will duly note, and will talk to the president, for he's the one that schedules that.
Right, because I'm, I mean, I call for it, and then I can't be here, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware. I didn't get here, I got here early today. I got here at quarter to 10. But Denise said the hearings were already open, so I'd appreciate it so I can be at the hearings.
And for many, 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 many years since I've been a member of council, you have been the hardest working member of council, and the most dutiful in terms of your presence here, and your presence to process. And so clerk has duly noted your concern. She relayed to the president, and hopefully, there will be accommodation to your interest. Any other conversation?
Yeah, Tuesday would be fine, but Wednesday is court dates usually, and I get to those hearings.
Okay. Any other conversation? Another conversation, I need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. We are adjourned.